This is the pre meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 25th. We have approval of minutes from August 11th and August the 18th.
Good job.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on September the 6th from 1:00 till 9:00 PM in Mardi Gras, near Mardi Gras Park.
I don't have a problem.
Okay. August 29th from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, this is on Holmes Drive.
No problem.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to declare structures at 2910 Berkeley Avenue, 1808 Brownlee Street, 480 Macarley Street, and 2353 Hart Avenue, public nuisances and ordering those demolished. Are those okay?
Um, let's go. Uh, I haven't had a chance to check on them, but I think they're going to lay it over for a week, so I know more about it.
I know.
So you're laying, so you're laying all of these, all of these over?
Um, yeah, I think they could be on the essential COVID, COVID items.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they normally, normally we're going to lay those over unless it's, uh, it's not nothing that we have to take up today.
Okay.
We generally waive the rule on those.
Yeah, those are consent resolutions usually. Aren't they?
Yeah.
Fred doesn't know what's going on in, in there in his district, we may, you know, give him time.
Yeah, I need, I need time to wrap up and see what's going on.
Okay.
Essential COVID items held over, 34025.
Hey, let me, hey, um, let me just make sure, we, we already declared these essential, these items, essential COVID items last week. So we don't need to declare them essential COVID items again this week, I wouldn't.
Right. I agree.
Right.
I agree.
You just do it when you adopt the agenda, it'll cover the whole thing to be safe.
Okay, okay, I'll take care of that, John.
Uh, ordinance to amend chapter 34 of the city code regarding short-term lodging or rentals.
I think we pulled this over 60 days, is that right?
90, I think she said 90.
It's 90 days.
Right.
We need, we need some more time.
Right. We can always bring it up earlier if we come to closure.
34026, ordinance to amend the capital improvement plan.
Uh, I believe that the President had assigned this committee to CIP, and before the 10:30 meeting, um, I'm gonna get with the other members of the committee and see what day is best for them, and we'll go ahead and schedule a meeting, and hopefully have that by 10:30.
Sounds good.
So I'm not too sure how long you want to lay that over for a week or two.
What, two weeks maybe?
Two weeks, two weeks.
Two weeks.
September the 8th.
Yeah, Central Labor Day.
01598, authorized agreement for Street and Canal Street. 08599, approved purchase order to Dr. MLK Junior Avenue Broad Street Project. 21605, authorized contract with Midwestern Commercial Roofers for Hertel Street Armory re-roofing. 21606, authorized contract with Michael Baker International for C E N I Engineering Services, 2019 CIP Bridge Maintenance and Repair. 21607, authorized contract with Harris Contracting for Rickery Park, grating and drainage improvement.
Before we go away from all those, um, what's, what's all going on at Hertel Street? Could, is anybody on that could just kind of briefly say what, what all is going on there? That's quarter million dollars for an old armory, I just wonder, what all do we have going on on Hertel?
Yes, sir, this is, uh, can you hear me? This is Jim Delap.
Yes, sir.
Um, so Hertel's where we have our Public Services Department, um, as well as other departments as well as our training classrooms for the city. Um, the, we're starting on, the roof needs to be replaced, it's, as you know, we assumed a very old building that was vacated by the National Guard Armory, but that's, uh, we see that as kind of, um, I don't want to say long-term, but that's definitely going to be used for our, those functions for the, for the immediate future and foreseeable future. Uh, so we have to repair the roof is one of the first things because of its, uh, you know, leaking nature, and there will be other small improvements we have to do. Once we get that mitigated, then there will be some remediation where the water leaks have damaged some walls and a few other things, so there will be other improvements, uh, over the near term.
And we only have one side of the street, the other side is, is that school board?
Correct. Uh, correct, it's all on the, it's all on the one side of the street, it's the, it's the main building, there's a little garage, and then a storage shed.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, who, who is talking?
Somebody's, somebody's live, got their TV on, sound like CNN, it's not me.
Okay, they muted, all right, thank you. Essential COVID-19 item 02027, ordinance to amend the rules for communications with council. 63028, ordinance to amend chapter 63 of the city code to establish requirements for record services and participation on the record rotation list.
Ma'am City Clerk, let's go back to 02027, uh, Mr. Williams, we're ready to move forward with that? You know, I think so, I mean, we had a good committee meeting, a lot of participation, uh, there is some, uh, to be just completely, uh, transparent, that, uh, there's at least one council member has one problem with, I think it was like paragraph six, that talked about when people are speaking, that section that is, that is commonly titled, uh, I think it's petitions and other communications to the council, um, the, um, it is, it is during that presentation of petitions and other communications, that we are going to reduce the, the number or the amount of time that one would be able to speak, uh, in addressing the council on any, on any number of subjects. We decided not to limit the subjects, um, we, um, put in a 24-hour for remote meeting notification, everything else kind of stayed the same, like I said, with, with regard to, again, there's, Fred had some opposition to it, that I don't think that the council ought to speak during that time. Because what it, in my, mine is, you can speak forever for the rest of the meeting, you can speak an hour during announcements, you can speak for an hour during any other section of the meeting, but during that time, what we're telling the public is, we only need to hear from you from three minutes. But if we don't limit ourselves, then what we're saying is, the item they're speaking to, then we speak to it when the agenda item is raised and there's a motion on the floor in accordance with the rules of Roberts rules. And the other would be that we would be unlimited amount of time we would speak during announcements at the end of the meeting. And that allows us to just not talk over the folks we have just limited to three minutes, that's it, thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Williams, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I don't think, I don't think the council ought to get it, get involved at all in trying to sanction council regarding them addressing, um, items that our citizens bring before us. Uh, I think when a citizen speaks, they, they should not be interrupted. Uh, if they are seated, and it's an issue that we can straighten out and shed more light on, because, because they may be leaving immediately after they speak, we ought not to sit there and wait for some moment down in our agenda where we can speak. I don't think we ought to put a muzzle on the council's mouth at any time during our proceeding, we only have to start with that. The next thing we're going to say, is council going to be able to have one minute? I don't think we ought to go down that road, and I gave an example, an example is that Spire has, has, has come through a number of neighborhoods where they have, they have cut into our streets and patched it, they're coming back and resurfacing just that section. And a person can easily come, come by and, uh, and say, I don't think it's right for the city, uh, coming to our neighborhoods and, uh, resurfacing part of a street, I live just down the street, they didn't touch my street, my street has not been resurfaced in 15 years, why would y'all stop just before you, you, you get to, you got to my house? So, that's something can easily be straightened out once they are seated. I can say, ma'am, this was, that work was not done by the city, it was done by Spire, and they, they, they are resurfacing because they are the ones who cut into the street and patched it, and by our own rules, they didn't have no choice but to come back and resurface over that, and hopefully, uh, if I had the funding, I would come back and get the rest of the street. I don't think that person would have nothing to say about that, but if I sit there, silence gives consent, it's just like saying, and, and they, he isn't sitting up there, he didn't open his mouth, like, yeah, we did, what you gonna do about it? We gonna do some most trees like that. I don't think we ought to be, ought to have no rules to say, we can't, uh, address issues after a person has come before us and, uh, had, and they've had their say.
If I could comment?
He just made my point for me, by the way, I just, go ahead.
If I could comment?
Let's, let's get Ms. Rich, and then, uh, we'll go to the Vice President.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I was under the impression that the speaker was not to be interrupted, we did, um, move from five minutes of time for that speaker to three minutes, that's part of the change of the rules. Um, I do tend to agree with Mr. Richardson in that sometimes we turn it after the person sits down, we will turn to the administration, there will perhaps be the right person there that can answer the question, if it's policing or public safety or, or firefighting, whatever, public works, and they can answer that question, um, especially a speaker who has signed in ahead of time, a lot of times the administration is prepared to give them an answer, and, um, also take information from that individual, uh, we, we put people together, we put the right person together with, with the questions they have or the concerns, so I do think there needs to be some of that time after the person sits down, but not to interrupt, not to stop their three minutes at all.
Yes.
So I think that as a Rules Committee member, I was sort of under the impression that, um, we were not going to necessarily limit the time that it took to resolve or help resolve the person's reason for coming out of their way to come down to address us or to address an agenda item. I do see that we will debate the agenda item, and that could probably go, um, we don't have to go back and forth at that point if they're addressing an agenda item, but, uh, we have two different types of speakers, and, um, I would also recommend that we lay this over a week, because even though our committee was well-attended and we debated the issue, uh, we are changing what our public is being asked to do, and it would be nice if they had an opportunity in this time to digest this new change and see what they have to tell us. Um, it's important in my office, I would, I would like to recommend that we not vote on it today, not, not to do it, but to make sure the public is well-aware that we've changed these rules, thanks.
This is the first read, this is the first read.
Correct, so.
Hold up, I rule, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr., Mr. Vice President, then Mr. Small, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, yeah, I agree with my other colleagues that, uh, pretty much this is a council meeting, and when citizens take the time to come down here, uh, they pretty much want to come down here to pretty much hear from not only the council, but also from the council. The council, uh, pretty much if the citizen just wants to just say something, again, they ought to just call or email us, and, you know, that's it, but they take the time to come down here, but we can sit up there and just be mute, I think that's kind of, I wouldn't say just disgrace, but kind of just disrespect for them just to sit there and have to wait for announcement time for it to, you know, respond back to, to them and everything, especially like, for instance, the budget's about to get ready to come up, I mean, the budget could take an hour, hour and a half, so a citizen gonna have to sit down there for an hour to an hour and a half, you know, listen to a whole other process that they really much not interested in, but they're more interested in, in their streets or their neighborhood and et cetera. But I do, I believe that we should limit the council for, especially for responding back to the citizens, because again, you know, we are, you know, um, you know, they our boss, and, but your boss asks you to do something, or they ask you a question, you know, you, you know, you, you know, you as the employer need to, you know, speak back to your boss and answer, answer them, not to wait till 15 or 30 minutes down the road to do that. So, I do agree with Ms. Rich that we probably do need to lay this over for another week and really just fine tune it, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm, uh, sympathetic to, uh, Mr. Williams' objectives with respect to, uh, limiting the council members. Uh, discuss, they're, on occasion, what happens, if someone comes down, they got a question or they got an issue or something, and then we spend a half an hour, 45 minutes with a, with a back and forth, and everybody making a statement and that kind of thing, and I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's appropriate. On the other hand, I, I think that I'm dubious about the, our, if we did limit the council members, if we did put something in the ordinance limiting the council members, I'm dubious about our ability to enforce that. I think the, the, uh, the chair would always be in a position to, to recognize a council member to speak, uh, and, uh, and the chair would probably be under, uh, pressure to do that in certain circumstances. So, like I say, I'm sympathetic to the effort, but I'm not sure how we get there.
And, um, I would then, Mr. President, say that if we're not going to limit our response, then we ought not limit the citizenry. I, I just think it sends a terrible message, that all of a sudden, we're going to decide because of one guy, or two guys, or one lady and a couple of guys, that we're gonna, we're gonna limit the, uh, the response of the citizens, our boss, I agree with you CJ, uh, but if we are going to limit them, um, and then we're going to talk over them for 15, 20 unlimited amount, and everything's possible, I just say that we, we scrapped this idea, um, that is being heavily criticized, and rightfully so, if there's not a trade-off.
Mr. Pres, Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I'll close my discussion on this matter by saying, we are transacting the city's business, we're, we're in a business mode, and we are not like them, they're not transacting business, we're transacting the city's business, we said, treat them just like we treat others, no, 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 we are transacting the city's business, we have to do what is necessary to get the city's business transacted, so, uh, we have always limited them, we limited them to five minutes, I, I don't know nobody coming down to, but y'all have more time than us, I, no, no one in my district, um, reported to me that they had an issue with, with the council rules, not, not one person, and District One reported to me anything about, this is something that we are trying to, uh, implement, I think that, I, I say again, the part in there, I, I don't have nothing with, with saying, let the people say what they want to say, and let them be seated, I think that's in order, uh, all of the time, we, we shouldn't have dialogues, and I think, uh, the President makes, makes that clear when he state, when he states the council rule, that, that we can't have no dialogue, I, I agree with that 100%, but that the, the council, we're gonna put the muzzle on the council, I think we need to scrap that and let us take care of the city's business.
Mr. President? Yeah, thank you, I, I think it's important to remember that we are a legislative body, and, uh, our primary task is to, is to engage in discussion leading to legislation for the city of Mobile. Now, if you're a citizen, you can't sign up to go speak to the Alabama Legislature, and you can't sign up to go speak to the House of Representatives or the Senate, that doesn't mean I'm opposed to letting citizens speak to us, because I, I'm, I'm fully in favor of that, I'm fully in favor of that. I think, uh, the great thing about municipal government is close to people, we ought to, we ought to listen to the people. Having said all that, it, it, we have the ability to impose, um, to, to impose reasonable restrictions on those communications, and that, you know, that's what we're talking about now, and, uh, I just, I think in all, in this discussion, we need to keep in mind what kind of body we are and what our primary purpose is, thank you.
I, I really believe we're closer to, uh, building consensus than, than it may appear, and hopefully over the course of this next week, we can reach a, a trade-off that accomplishes everybody's objectives, um, so I think the next three or four days would be helpful in kind of showing up what we really want to do, and then hopefully have something that we all can live with on next week. All right. Uh, thank all of you, this has been a, this has been a great discussion, Ma'am City Clerk?
Okay, um, we're going back to the towing ordinance, uh, 63028, ordinance to amend chapter 63 of the city code to establish requirements for record services and participation on the record rotation list.
If I could comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, this is a long time coming, but we'll, uh, hopefully rest it a week, um, I believe the industry knows, um, to look on the city's website so they can read it, they had a lot, um, of input over the course of a couple of months or so, or longer, and, um, I believe everybody's about as pleased as they can be, there still might be comments, of course, coming in, uh, but I know that the chief of police and also his legal counsel, our legal counsels, and also, um, the industry, um, met in the middle to try to create a really good ordinance that is, um, gives more guidance, um, to that service, um, and a towing company does not have to join the rotation if they're that bothered by what is needed to, um, be shown and produced by being part of that, it's actually really a public service, and it helps our police, it helps our citizens, but we want it to be as balanced as possible, and I believe we got there. So I want to thank everyone, because there was really lots of thanking that needs to go on for all the input that it took to get where we are, thanks.
Good job, uh, tasked on you and everything, so, good job.
Oh, yes, thank you.
It's, I, I wanted to say the same thing, that this was a difficult ordinance from the beginning, and, um, Ms. Rich stuck with it, and, uh, she had numerous of meetings, and some of those meetings was hot, but at the end, I think, uh, most, most parties concerned about this ordinance, um, ended up satisfied with, they weren't, they were willing for us to move forward with it, so I, I commend, um, best for hanging in there with this ordinance.
Well, we can't please everybody.
Can't please everybody.
03620 and 621, approve the mayor's appointment of Anitra Henderson as Executive Director of External Affairs and Communications, and appointment of Joseph Snowden as Executive Director of Administrative Services. 08622, approve purchase order to Atlantic Video Corporation for video wall panels, $29,695.
Yeah, where, where would those go? Every, is that every department?
Don Payne is on.
Okay, they, they all muted.
They'll come back.
No, this is, uh, this is Don Rose, so those panels are gonna go, they're gonna replace some panels in the jock, some are gonna go in the new police, um, precinct, uh, down at the parking garage that moved down to the downtown precinct, and, um, some are gonna go in the 10th floor conference room at Government Plaza.
I'll say, police in 10th floor, okay. Thank you.
08623, approve purchase order to CDW Government LLC for 45 iPad Air Tablets for the Fire Department, $43,168.95. 08624, approve item-based beer for hooded disposable coveralls. 21625, authorized.
Okay, I would like first, I'm not opposed to this, I, I don't know anything about it, a hooded, hoodie coveralls, can someone say what this is used for?
Yes, sir, Councilman Richardson, this is Don Rose again, those are Tyvek, the type of Tyvek protective coveralls, uh, they're for the fire department, they're the kind of, uh, like medical gear kind of coveralls you would see, um, and that, that's used for fire department for, uh, uh, exposure to potential COVID patients, so that, that's what they primarily use them for.
Okay, all right, good.
21625, authorized service contract with Potagold Rentals LLC for portable toilets for various city facilities, $10,920 per year.
That's a lot, lot of potagold.
21626, authorized contract with H&amp;H Electric Company for emergency generators for public work facilities, $228,885. 21627, authorized contract with Robert J. Baggett for cruise terminal parking deck structural repairs, $189,335. 37628, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license for Family Dollar Store on Pleasant Valley Road. 37629, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises license for Family Dollar on Navco Road. 4630 through 633 are declaring the structures public nuisances. 58634, authorized removal of weeds, group 1606. 58635, add lawn love LLC to the rotation list of contractors to abate properties declared as public nuisances. 60636, determine an appropriation to Williamson High School boys' basketball, serves a public purpose and approved payment, $1,500. 60637.
Let me ask you, uh, Ma'am City Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Typically, the expenditures we make to schools don't, don't show up on the agenda, is, is that correct, am I off-base?
No, they, they're here, these are on the agenda.
Right.
All discretionary. Discretionary funds.
Yeah, Wanda started that years ago.
Mr. Uh, Manzi, the main reason for that is we need to declare a public purpose.
Oh, I'm not against it, I'm not hiding anything, I want the public to know I'm doing it, but, uh, I just was asking out of, maybe I, maybe I'm tying that to something else, but let's, let's move forward, I'm, I apologize, that's great.
Yeah, this is not for the council.
So what now?
It's not the school board, it's the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
6637 and 638, approve award a special bonus to the firefighter of the month, Demond Clark, and to the, uh, office of the month, Jimmy Bird. Presentation of petition.
Which ones are we, which ones of these are we gonna take up today, are we gonna waive the rule on? Uh, we got the third, we got, uh, third, 37628 and 629 are the liquor licenses, we got the removal of weeds, uh, the Williamson High School, and the two special bonuses. We got the removal of weeds, the Williamson High School, and the two special bonuses. Anything else?
The last time we did the generators, anybody, do we, are we ready for them? Do we need to vote on those today?
We can't go wrong. We're in the hurricane season. Let's do the generators.
Okay, 21626. All right, John, are you gonna make that motion, or CJ, someone?
Yeah, fine.
I think it's, so it's 6, 21626, 37628, 37629, 58634, 60636, 637, and 638.
Those will all move forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Day, did you say 620 and 621?
The appointments?
Yes.
Yes. I'd be happy to add those, if that's okay with everybody.
Oh, I thought you called them out.
No.
20 and 21.
Yeah, 20 and 20.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have signed in Reggie Hill, and Marion emailed you the items on the agenda that he is going to address.
Read ahead.
I'm gonna be interested to see him fit all that into five minutes.
That's why I sent it to a read-ahead package.
And also including that was the non-agenda items that was on the email also. Call for public hearings, 41639 call for public hearing to consider the vacation of a five-foot strip of land adjacent to lot 4B, Walker's addition to Broadwood District 7, scheduled September 27, 22nd.
Can somebody talk about that?
That was before the planning commission. It was a subdivision, and it required a vacation of a strip of land in order to get the adequate, I guess, square footage on each lot.
No, it said something about a defunct Three Mile Island. I don't know what, I'm trying to remember, trail or something.
Yeah, it was like a walkway, but no one's utilized it.
Yeah, it's not gonna stop our, our big plan anyway, is it?
I don't believe so.
The Three Mile.
Chris is saying that he can address it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, the property owner's got a subdivision lot, and it is adjacent to a pretty large right-of-way, I think it's 100 feet. It's called the Three Mile Creek Parkway, I believe, which was an idea about 20 years ago, or maybe better, that was scrapped. And the city had obtained this right-of-way right next to Three Mile Creek. And the property owner, I think his house is actually a little bit closer to his side setback than it needs to be, and so this is, he's basically asking for this five feet along the side. And the city's still gonna have 95 feet if they need it. But I don't, I think this road area, it's not a road there, it's just a right-of-way. It is not even connected to anything, so it's, it shouldn't be a problem, in my opinion.
All right.
41640 call for public hearing to rezone property located at 5535 Linwood Steiner Road and 5575 US Highway 90 West, east side of Linwood Steiner Road, US Highway 90 West, 100 feet north of Cooman Road, 200 feet east of US Highway 90 West, from B3 and B5 to B3, District 4, scheduled September 22nd. 41641 call for public hearing to consider the revocation of business license of Deep Water Marketing LLC for houses located at 259, 261, and 263 South Broad Street, District 2, scheduled September 22nd.
Pardon me, Mr. President, but if this presents a, a public, a threat to the general public, can't there a rule, we can bring it up today and vote on it?
No.
So what, Madam City Clerk?
No, this has to be advertised. Have to serve notice. You have to serve notice.
Not an emergent. Is this, is this an emergency or is it not an emergency? That's, I guess, the question.
Well, in my estimation, I would make an argument, and I think it would go pretty strongly that it, that it isn't an emergency situation in that someone literally died, was shot and killed. That's the penultimate offense at this particular property. On top of all that has occurred over the last three to four years, the icing on all of that is that someone has now lost their life. And even after the transfer of the property to this new owner from Baymanet, offenses are still occurring, infractions are still occurring. It's an absolute blight and attraction on the community. Well, we've got our senior population who are absolutely afraid to go from out of that car to their homes, where they've invested all of these resources, multicultural, where they're afraid to go out and venture into their front yards because of the people and the infractions that take place there. So the quicker, you know, I understand people want to be noticed, and they want to read it in the paper, but it's not their neighborhood. It's not their lives.
As I'm saying, I'm ready to, I'm ready to vote.
I have a question.
Ms. Rich?
Did we revoke the license to one of these addresses not too long ago that the public safety came down and gave us all of the documentation on why it was a public safety issue? Or is that a different address?
The, my, my remembrance is that the Public Safety Director, Police Chief, Ms. Wanda Ramon, some months back, came and laid all of the evidence before us as relates to these properties. And between us voting and, and the process, I guess, that would have consummated what we did, the property was sold. And so, Chief Barber, if you have anything you'd like to add.
Right, let me finish my train of thought on this, because we can do this again if they can prove a public safety reason why the license should not be held. But if we don't have our code investigators that come in and put in for the violations to the property, what presents, again, someone else taking up a new name, a new company, and, and running these same businesses? And I had asked that, and I was told at the time, besides pulling the business license, there would be violations that, we saw those pictures. They certainly made violations of our city's plumbing codes. I mean, remember, it was over and over what we looked at. So if this is the same address, but I'm, I'm not sure I, I remember the address back a number of months ago. But we're gonna be in the same exact rotation on this if there isn't a concerted effort to do everything to take care of the problems there and make sure that they are repaired and resolved. The neighborhood is gonna see the same thing over and over with a different person that we keep pulling the license from. But the activity still goes on. So that would be one thing, and I don't, do we have pictures and all the information that we need to know about how that person conducts his business at those locations? We have the one incident recent of the murder, but what else is there that doesn't run us to court for taking away someone's ability to do business? Now, it is a privilege, but at the same time, they have rights as well.
Well, you know, it's interesting, that particular commentary. I'm not gonna go down that road, because it's, it's too easy. I'm not gonna do it. Mr. Public Safety Director, what, what would, and also to Mr. Arledge, do we have the ability, in what, in a, in a situation where we would deem it to be an emergency, to move forward quicker than the normal procedure? And, and Mr. Barber, if you have anything that you would like to, your department has run all of the investigations, so where are we as relates to what Ms. Rich just asked?
Well, your memory is correct, in that we did bring all this information to you and did quite a bit of undercover operations. There were some drug violations in that area, very many code violations. The previous property owner was actually arrested for attempting to bribe a fire inspector, if y'all remember. So the, but your memory is correct, in that by the time we got to the hearing portion of it, they had switched the property to a different property owner, and that's what put the brakes on it. So your question on whether we can proceed without notice in the hearing is actually one for Chris Arledge. It was my understanding that we had to have a hearing, and there had to be, I think, about 10 days of public notice, Mr. Arledge?
Yeah, the ordinance we're following under the business license creates a process for notice for the hearing to revoke a business license. You have to give the people due process and adequate notice, and that, it's at least 10 days notice. You gotta go find the guy, get him served with the papers. And I would recommend, as, you know, bigger deal as this is, being very conservative with meeting these time requirements so that it isn't, doesn't give cause for it to be immediately overturned.
So, so we, we could move quicker than maybe September 22nd, is what you're saying?
Thanks.
Mr. Arledge?
I thought we could do the 15th. I mean, it's just 10 days, so, but we, you got weekends and stuff in the middle of that and a holiday. So I think the 15th is what I was thinking, that, that'd be about as early as I would go.
Hey, Chris, is it 10 days after the, after they're served? Or 10 days after notice is posted?
10 days after they're served.
So we gotta get them served first.
Correct. And that was part of the problem last time. The prior owner was served, but the new owner was not served.
Yeah, they're gonna pull this again, by the way.
Absolutely. That's, that's the city's violation of the structure itself, to shut that usage down. Because it's, that in itself was terrible to look at those pictures that people are, are paying rents to. I mean, that, ooh, awful. I doubt it got any better if our violations weren't served.
I, I think we need to figure out some kind of long-term solution for this property. I don't, I, I think we're being gamed, and we're gonna continue to be gamed unless we can figure out some kind of long-term fix for this.
I, I totally agree.
In the neighborhood.
And, and this, these three properties ought not be allowed. You know, we're investing, even from a, a city and a federal standpoint, millions of dollars along Broad Street. Others are coming and investing. And even those who, who've been there indigenously should not have to put up with these three funk boxes. There's, there's absolutely no value. You know, now somebody will come in and buy it, hopefully renovate it and fix it up, sure. But right now, it's just one problem. I, I think about Arge and, and the Cunningham's right there across the street from this. It's, a final answer needs to be brought to us, where we don't have to keep going and revoking licenses over and over and over again. And, and Mr. Arledge, in idea on what we could do between serving that would prevent them from transferring ownership so that, that they don't catch us in that little gap period?
I mean, I don't know that we can stop somebody from selling their property. There's a mortgage on, on the property of several hundred thousand dollars that they, a bank holds right now. It's gonna be, it's not, hasn't been transferred as of last Friday. But I don't know that we can say you can't sell your property to somebody.
What about the Mobile Health Department coming in and talking about the health violations that we know are going on there? And then serving the owner, the current owner, and marrying him to this problem so that he has to make, you know, some kind of resolve with the health department too, besides our code violations?
Yeah, but see, Best, it's more than just these code violations. The, the, we've got all kinds of bad.
Well, we can take the license because of this public safety. That's proven last before. I imagine it, it didn't get any better. I don't know. I haven't seen that report. But if you, if you put all of the structures that we have, why is that able to keep moving forward in the condition it's in? And I don't, I don't get it. I feel bad for that neighborhood.
I think the administration needs to put a full court press. This is, this is a council issue as far as, you know, revoking. But that property and the problem and the cyst that it is in our city is an administrative issue. And they need, and, and, look, somebody needs to put some pressure on that whole piece of property. If it were in some other places, we would already have done that, I think. And that's just, we need to, we need to rock on this thing. And I, and I plead with the mayor and his administration to, to join us and join the representative there. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I know this is your district, and truly do respect that. But for a time's sake, you know, could we just go ahead and probably just call for this and have the, our attorney and the city attorney just get together in the next couple of days and see if they can do something else? I mean, we always can go back and haul it back, you know, et cetera. But, you know, let them work together and see what, what can be done, you know, from department to the state.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Vice President. If we could call that public hearing instead of for the 22nd, for the 15th, which is at an earlier time period. And hopefully, that'll give us enough time to put a, put some strategy together that will prevent us from having to do this again next year this time.
Yeah, all right.
Hey, Mr. President, I just got two questions for Mr. Arledge on this before we leave. What happened, what happens, Chris, if we can't serve them by the 5th? Let's say we set it for the 15th, and they don't get served until the 7th. What, do we have to start all over again?
Yeah. That's two weeks they got to serve. I think we can pull that off if we care to.
The second question is, is, is the business license? I don't understand this part about how they changed owners. The business license issued to the, to a, to a legal entity, a person or a corporation or LLC, something like that, it, it's not, it's not, it's not attached to the land, is it?
No, it's issued to the person for the right to do business at that location, but it's to the company or the person.
Yeah, so, so, so if, let's say, let's say the title is transferred. The guy title changed, changes the title, you know, transfers it into, the title to another entity, that entity, that new entity would not have a license to operate that business at that location.
They would have to reapply for and get a new license, yes, the new company.
That happened.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what we've got to stop.
With all the violations physically to the facility.
Well, I guess, I think, I think if Levon wants it to, you know, have the meeting on the 15th, I guess we just give it a shot, see, see if they can getting served before the 5th.
That's right.
Well, I believe they can do it. They're doing it all over the city, because of the folks in my community. So they'll be able to find him. He's in Baymanet. I hope you find him.
His lawyers in Daphne, his lawyers in Daphne, and Pittman. That's just a quick search. I found that. So maybe wanna call him.
All right, do we have any additional announcements?
Yes, sir. I just want to mention that the, as you know, the Finance Committee will meet this afternoon at 2 o'clock in order to review. in order to review the supposed fiscal year twenty-one budget. Uh, this is a work session for the council members. I understand that Mr. West, uh, will be in attendance and will have a brief presentation uh, to give to the council, excuse me. And after Mr. West's presentation, I'll ask the, uh, the other members of the committee if they have any questions for Mr. West and then we'll move on to any other council members who are there. But we will not be taking any public comment. Public comment will be taken, uh, on a week from today at the public hearing.
Joe, may we have a presentation prior to the meeting? Uh, even if it's just minutes prior to the meeting, uh, so that I can have it up in case, you know, we're not able to see it through Zoom for one reason or another? Paul, if that's possible.
John, this is, this is Paul. We'll get it to you before the meeting.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Great. Great. Thank you very much.
All right, well, we'll see each other at ten thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.